Good evening. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. It's wonderful to see all of you here. Ms. Rios, would you please take the role?
Yes. Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Campos?
Present.
Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox? Ms. Martorana?
Here.
Mr. Mayberry Mays?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have quorum.
I guess I don't like to do it that way, sorry. The first item of business is approval of the agenda with one friendly amendment, Board colleagues, which is to postpone the vision and mission work session. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the friendly amendment.
Campos, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dix and a second by Campos. Is there any discussion or questions? I will share that we are actively working on the vision and mission in partnership with the strategic communications team. Board members, please cast your votes.
Martorana, yes?
The vote is approved, six to zero. Next on the agenda is the public forum. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda and up to five minutes for an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dm schools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at the time after the meeting. Thanks for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. We have one, Sheree Martis.
Thank you. Dr. Roberts and members of the board, my name is Sheree Martis. I'm a retired public, Des Moines Public School teacher after 40 years of service, and I'm the lone member tonight of our Des Moines Public School Strong Team because the other members are attending our first statewide meeting on a Zoom call tonight. So we're really excited about the movement across the state and about coordinating public voices to support and defend public schools. And so we're really excited about, you know, what this is starting to look like. So we're still in the process of meeting with board members. Thank you to those of you that have taken time out of your busy, busy schedules, and we're going to continue to make those contacts second semester. We've really enjoyed the opportunity to come and learn, and we're still learning, and we're going to be looking forward to other opportunities to learn with you folks and to, and to support what a fabulous, fabulous public school, Des Moines Public Schools is. You know, we're really concerned about the infiltration of charter schools. There's another one that has kind of cropped up, one's cropped up in Highland Park where I grew up. And quite frankly, my feeling is that, you know, we have a lot more to offer than they do any day of the week. So, but I think, I think we have to be vigilant, and I think we all have to be dedicated in a very strong way, in a very heartfelt way, to our public schools. We have to be loyal to our public schools, and we have to stand up and we have to defend them day in and day out because that's what we're up against. So anyway, we're, once again, I just want to say thanks, you know, for the, the time that you've taken. Thank you, Patrick Dix, for the initiative that you've shown in terms of really moving our policy regarding cell phones because it is a big issue. And I think that we're all moving in the right direction, and so we're just looking forward to continuing to collaborate with board members and, and to learn more with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers I have.
Before we turn to district recognitions, I am going to turn it over to Anna Campos and Maria Alonso to read a brief statement.
Living in a democracy means embracing the peaceful transfer of power through elections, a cornerstone of the nation's, of the nation's history. However, the intense political rhetoric from all sides during and since the election is created, it has created anxiety and uncertain within our school community, particularly for students and families with mixed immigration status. We want to acknowledge our students and families that might worry or might be worried or concerned about what the future holds. In 2017, in light of multiple federal exclusive actions negatively impacting immigrant families, Des Moines Public Schools passed a resolution to support all students and families regardless of their immigration status. As a district, we remain committed to ensure equal protection and safeguards for our students from discrimination based on race, ethnicity, citizenship, immigration status, or national origin. We understand that the fear is uncertain, especially concerning the political deportations of family members, can significantly impact our students' well-being, their attendance, and their ability to learn. To address these challenges, the board, in partnering with the superintendent, to ensure information, including partnerships with organizations that offer support, services, and access to information and legal resources, will be shared with our students and families. Our dedication to fostering a safe and inclusive environment remains overwearing. DMPS is committed to respecting and supporting our youth and our families, ensuring that every student has an opportunity to thrive. Together, we will uphold the value of inclusivity, respect, and understanding that are essential to our vibrant, diverse, amazing school community.
Vivir en una democracia significa aceptar la transferencia pacífica del poder a través de elecciones. Una piedra angular de la historia de nuestra nación. Sin embargo, la intensa retórica política de todos los bandos durante y desde la elección ha estado creando ansiedad e incertidumbre dentro de nuestra comunidad escolar, en particular para los estudiantes y las familias con estatus migratorio mixto. Reconocemos que nuestros estudiantes y familias puedan tener preocupaciones sobre lo que el futuro puede traer. En el 2017, a la luz de múltiples acciones ejecutivas federales que afectaron negativamente a las familias inmigrantes, las escuelas públicas de Des Moines aprobaron una resolución para apoyar a todos los estudiantes y familias, independientemente de su estatus migratorio. Como distrito, seguimos comprometidos a garantizar la igualdad de la protección y salvaguardar a nuestros estudiantes de la discriminación basada en raza, etnia, ciudadanía, estatus migratorio, u origen nacional. Entendemos que el miedo y la incertidumbre, especialmente en relación con la posible deportación de miembros de la familia, puede afectar significativamente el bienestar de nuestros estudiantes, su asistencia, y su capacidad de aprender. Para abordar estos desafíos, la Junta está colaborando con el Superintendente para asegurar comunicación, incluyendo asociaciones con organizaciones que brindan servicios de apoyo y acceso a información para asegurar que esto sea compartido con nuestras, nuestros estudiantes y familias. Nuestra dedicación a fomentar un entorno seguro e inclusivo sigue siendo inquebrantable. DMPS, la Junta Directiva, el distrito se compromete a respetar y apoyar a nuestros jóvenes y sus familias, garantizando que cada estudiante tenga la oportunidad de prosperar. Juntos defendemos los valores de inclusión, respeto, y comprensión que son esenciales para nuestra comunidad escolar vibrante, diversa, y maravillosa. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Campos and Ms. Alonso. Now I'm going to turn it to the superintendent for district recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. Certainly want to echo gratitude to board members, Alonso and Campos. Thank you. Thank you for your support. As always, we continue to bring forward district recognitions at every board meeting where we honor, recognize, and truly highlight the accomplishments of our students and the adults who serve them every single day. There are so many amazing and outstanding things happening in our classrooms and out, and so we always take the time to make sure that we highlight these recognitions. I'm pleased this evening to share a few recognitions that demonstrate not only the academic successes, but the work that is happening coming from the teachers, staff, and our leaders. First, with pride, I want to say that the outstanding reputation of the Des Moines Public Schools for College Preparatory Education is well-known and well-deserved. From the nationally recognized academics being offered at Central Academy and Central Campus, to all five of our comprehensive high schools and our virtual academy, being recognized on the Iowa AP Index, and our offerings of advanced placement and dual-credit courses are just among the many opportunities for students in Iowa who really want to continue pursuing higher education. Of course, one of the most daunting and even discouraging aspects of a post-secondary pursuit is the expenses of attending college or university. And too often, this is a barrier for students who have been historically marginalized. Fortunately for us here in the Des Moines Public Schools, we have champions who see and value public schools, and we have some of those champions who come in the form of partners, and they see the great potential in our students and are always willing to invest in their futures. One of those partners is QuestBridge, an organization that works with more than 50 of the top-ranked colleges and universities across the country to cover all expenses for students to continue their education at many of these prestigious institutions. Tonight, I'm honored to ask our own leader of Central Academy, Dr. Jessica Gortey, to come forth and share a little bit about three brilliant scholars in our midst, and to talk a little bit about this news and exciting plans for their future.
Board members, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak tonight. I'm very excited to introduce these three young people who all have been awarded and recognized as QuestBridge scholars. We have Nenez Abakar, who is going to Northwestern. We have Joslyn Chavaria, who is going to Notre Dame, Notre Dame, excuse me. And also, we have Sujaal Pokhar, who is going to Vanderbilt. And instead of me telling you about them, they've all been members at Central Academy. They've been participating in our classes since middle school, so this is their fifth or sixth year at Central Academy, which is thrilling. I thought you'd rather hear from them.
Hello, guys. Firstly, I have so many people to thank. First, I want to start off by thanking God. My faith really kept me grounded in this college application process. I want to thank my family, and then I also want to thank my teachers. Every single teacher that I've told that I got accepted to Northwestern has cried, and it's just, it's, it's, I, I really, I couldn't have done it without my teachers. So I want to start off by saying, I grew up in a two-bedroom apartment, and in that two-bedroom apartment, I shared a single twin bed with my little sister. And I am the first in my family to go to college. There were so many things that I did not think were possible for me. So going to college, let alone a school like Northwestern on a full ride, is life-changing. And sometimes online, I see rhetoric like, "You only got in because you're black," or "You only got in because you're poor." But I want to challenge that. I feel like oftentimes, people see these impressive accomplishments but don't remember all of the hard work that went into it. People, people just see that I got into Northwestern. They don't see the hours I spent crying over speech in the B. All of the hours I spent crying over AP seminar, or all the hours I spent crying over chemistry. All the hours of not feeling good enough, but I did it. And this, I genuinely have, it's just, it's amazing. And when I got in, I remember the day, all of the imposter syndrome went away, and I'm just, I'm so grateful.
I just want to say, thank you for, I just want to thank everyone for being, being here, and I would just like to give a big shout-out to my mentors along the way. Like, they would not, I would not be where I am without them today. I remember walking into my first day of high school and going into a classroom and being challenged for one of the first times. I remember just trying to get by and just doing the assignments, but a North High School teacher, she called me out on my laziness and my willingness just to get by, and she was, she was just like, "You're not doing enough. I know you could do more and push yourself." And with, with learning all of that, and with so many other people along the way to help me, it's just been amazing and wonderful.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Hello. I also want to say thank you to everyone who supported me. I think coming from North High School, this achievement means a lot because I know that a lot of people like to stigmatize or stereotype the students who go to North, and I'm happy that I get to serve as representation that success from that school does happen, and I just hope to inspire other students who go to North or who go to any of the DMPS schools who think that they don't have the qualifications or the achievements to go out of state. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without the mentors from DMPS, or the counselors from Central Academy, or the English teachers who peer-reviewed my supplementals and my essays. So I'm really, really grateful for this opportunity and to be able to succeed and make it out of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're so proud of this group of students.
Thank you. Congratulations to you all. One more round of applause. Also, this evening, as we enter into the holiday season in the spirit of giving, I want to certainly compliment and commend our faculty and staff at the Des Moines Public Schools for their generosity. Last month, the annual United Way of Central Iowa campaign was held. As you probably know, United Way is one of our most esteemed community partners, supporting everything from preschool to options academy, even free eyewear and eyeglasses for many of our students. In this year's United Way campaign, our employees, our DMPS teammates, donated a total of $57,452.46, and this is a 24% increase over the support received from last year.
That's great.
Thank you. Before I wrap it up, I want to give a couple of shout-outs to employees for their participation in this campaign. While we value and appreciate 100% of you who donated, first, our small but mighty communications team was the only department or school that had a 100% participation in the campaign. So certainly, thanks to them. And among the participation, participating in campaign, or in terms of schools, East High School was the top high school, Goodrel Middle was the top middle school, and Edmonds the top elementary school, with East High School raising more than $2,100 on their own. You know, as we know, United Way of Central Iowa is not only a partner, but they work arm-in-arm with us on so many issues, and I want to express my gratitude, Mary Selison team, for so many of our employees, and so many of our employees for showing their generosity. A great fundraising campaign next year, we are going to top it. And finally, this evening, as we think about recognitions of amazing things happening here in the Des Moines Public Schools, certainly want to acknowledge, recognize, and congratulate our own Vice Chair of the Board, Dr. Skylar Mayberry Mays. He will be honored with the NAACP Visionary Leadership in Education Award, an esteemed award given by the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. So, Dr. Mayberry Mays, congratulations to you. It's important to note that this award recognizes exceptional contributions to education, workforce development, and advocacy for equitable opportunities, and he epitomizes that every day in the community and for the Des Moines Public Schools. If you haven't already, listen to the latest edition of the podcast that is fastly becoming, the educational podcasts in the land that everyone wants to listen to. Please tune into our own, the Become Here project, our DMPS podcast, led by our own Assistant Director, I'll say, for the communications team, Amanda. Be sure to download it. The most recent, I believe, topic, we talked a lot about our state profiles and celebrated some of the amazing accomplishments of schools in terms of their recognition. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's recognitions.
Great, thank you. And I should also acknowledge, Skylar, you're going to get a little tension, but Skylar is in his first night as Vice Chair, serving as Vice Chair, so congratulations for that as well. I'm excited that we get to work together. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our monitoring report, guardrail two. Before I turn it over to Ms. Alonso and facilitate the board discussion of the monitoring report, board members, I was thinking about how important it is that we celebrate the good things. And all of you, I know because you studied it, saw that guardrail four was on consent. And for those of you that are, don't have it memorized, guardrail four, the superintendent shall not allow an environment in the classroom for both students and staff that is psychologically and physically unsafe and unwelcome. And the particular measure that we looked at was student responses from sixth to 12th grade, and I just want to point out that there was an increase. It was a 3% increase in how students perceived and responded to that, to that effort. And I know it's taking, it's everything from the curriculum and the way that our faculty and staff is engaging with our young people, but I just want to say thank you. And while there's always work to do, it is really important to acknowledge the gains. And so, thank you very much for letting me talk about that for a minute. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Alonso, and she is going to take us through a monitoring conversation around guardrail two.
Great, thank you. So goal monitoring is an opportunity for the board, for us to talk to, with our superintendent, give him the opportunity to share with us what's working and what's not. It's an opportunity for us to ask ourselves whether goals align with our reality or the reality with the goals. The goals are the vision, student outcomes, and reality is the growth that we see in our district, we have had in our district. We are going to start with questions, who, what, and why. And board members, if you could have the 20 questions that you all came up with, that would be great for tonight. I have 21. Great. Let's see. First, we have to make sure, give me one second. We have to make sure that the report that we are monitoring has for, I did highlight it, I promise you, I did, that it shows the specific goal. So, board, please let me know that this indeed is there. It has the goal or the interim goal that we're monitoring. It shows data for the three previous reporting periods. It also shows the current reporting period, and also, it must show the target reporting periods. Does it clearly show the superintendent's understanding of the system performance relative to the goal? Does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's understanding of the performance? Please tell me that we, if we have that, so we can move forward.
We, we do have a report that has the past data trends, and has the date and the time period, and the evaluation, which is currently not on track, for two A. And for two B, it is on track.
Correct. Okay. So we are good to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Norris, for indicating that our report is, the first is not on track, but the second is. Interim guardrail two is not on track. And interim guardrail four is on track. Okay. Perfect. Two A. Gracias, yes, four A. Muy bien, very well. Who would like to go first?
Dr. Roberts, on page three, you talked about adopting curriculum with fidelity, the Wayfinder curriculum in particular. Can you just, because it's been a while since most of us have been in the classroom, what is the Wayfinder curriculum? I don't need a deep dive, but just kind of give us an idea, some context around, what does this look like? Is it a, is it a class? Is it part of, is it weaved into curriculum that we already have? How is this brought into our classrooms?
Thank you, Board Member Dix. Yes, so Wayfinder is an SEL curriculum, social-emotional learning curriculum, offered by an organization that clearly has not only been peer-reviewed, but based on our own review and our RFP process over the last year and a half or so, having looked at a number of different curriculum offerings, we decided to go with Wayfinder through the RFP process. The curriculum, of course, while it has a little bit of a spin-off from Castle's five competencies around social-emotional learning, right, again, self-awareness, social awareness, building strong relationships, sound decision-making, and self-regulation, the curriculum actually offers the components of any curriculum that any other person would utilize in a classroom in terms of academics. And so it has components that includes goals and aims, subject matter, and it provides guidance to teachers around pacing, as well as giving them some sort of guidance around assessments that will tell them whether or not a student or an adult is moving towards mastery.
Actually, just to follow up on that, because so much of what I read was, and I'll come back to some of the other things, but around the importance of intersection and integration, and how to integrate SEL into kind of the, the common day. And so I'm wondering how, what does that look like, and how, when you have a standalone curriculum, what latitude are teachers given to, to incorporate concepts, or is it like a standalone SEL lesson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's such a multifaceted question, but I'm happy to dive right in. So I want to start with sort of the last ask you have, and that is with regards to teacher latitude. The one thing that we will always do is to respect sort of the professionalism of teachers, always allow them to have agency in terms of how they are delivering on their pedagogical strategies. However, we do that in a way that it's a little bit of a sort of bound, right, latitude, because we also want to make sure that we're striving towards consistency. And so in, in the case of the Wayfinder curriculum, you ask about what does it mean and look like in terms of its integration? What I'll say is while, you know, SEL is one of our guardrails and therefore an important priority of ours, I want to think about the Wayfinder curriculum right now as more of a supplement to our core curriculum offerings, right? English, language arts, math, science, and social studies. And so in terms of integration, what does it look like in practicality? You are going to see some variations based on grade level band. So in our elementary So, in our elementary schools and our middle schools, who were able to build in either advisory peers or appear similar to advisory, teachers are able to spend a lot more time delivering on the curriculum through that process. At our high schools, again, certainly given the demands of the high school curriculum and the fact that we are in a time-constrained environment, we are seeing a little bit more of sort of variance in terms of how our high schools are approaching utilizing the curriculum. So, we only have one of our high schools this year that have had some intentionality on adopting or creating an advisory period, but our other high schools and high school leaders are finding a way to make sure that they're infusing some aspects of the curriculum. I'll acknowledge that, and certainly you'll see in what's not going well, we still have some improvements to make.
Maybe a follow-up to that, because you mentioned the importance of building leaders and their role in embracing that as a, as a key principle, that they want to cascade into the organization. Is that a choice that building leaders are allowed to make, or is it a mandate of sorts?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think fortunately for us, we did not need to move sort of the curriculum implementation by thinking of it as a mandate or directive, because what we found is that 100% of our building leaders have embraced and see the value in SEL curriculum. Very likely to see some variation in sort of in this monitoring report is based on the culture of school, and based on what building leaders believe that they need to prioritize at this time. And so, you are likely to see that while some of our schools are implementing SEL with fidelity, there are some buildings that are not necessarily there yet. And so, we have two SEL coordinators in the district who are doing a phenomenal job. Our schools have SEL champions, and so, they are working hand in hand and in a collaborative effort with our building leaders to make sure that we're thinking about, what does implementation with fidelity look like? So, there is some variation right now, and in some instances, we are probably seeing the result of that investment.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, page one, again, just looking at the data, I'll ask a similar question to one I did in the last monitoring report, which is, the data for, for teachers is encouraging in that, you know, we're seeing an increase and on track, but in 2A, on page one, seeing the three years or the three timeframes that we're looking at, they look very similar, and the students seem to feel worse at the end of the year than they do at the beginning of the year. And I just wonder, again, how the team is looking at historical data like that to say, what are we going to do differently over time? We believe in this idea, but what are we going to do differently over time to, so that we don't have another line that looks exactly the same when we monitor this next year?
So, you know, by its very definition, right, self-efficacy is this belief that one has, that they can accomplish goals and tasks. And it's less about how they're feeling, particularly when we think about, I associate feeling with things like self-esteem and belonging. And while we've looked at the three-year trend and realized that, over the last three years, on this particular interim, the variation between either moving steadily towards achieving the target or not ranges between three to five percentage points. Certainly, while, you know, it's statistically significant, I don't necessarily subscribe, if I may, to the belief that students are feeling worse about themselves, because we are not measuring or administering this survey to the same group of students over the period of time, right? Again, they are students who are in grade six through 12, but Board Member Dix, it's a great call-out, because just looking at this, we want to make sure that, we would like to see this number much stronger, much higher, because it tells us that, how we are sort of encouraging our students to think about their, their own confidence around achieving goals and tasks, we're not where we want to be. What I'll also share is, you know, again, the team continues to look at a deep dive into sort of some correlative attributes about some of the other initiatives we have in place. And one that we've talked a lot about when we think about monitoring goals is, how are we, in terms of teachers in the classroom, delivering their lessons in such a manner that they are allowing or encouraging students to carry the cognitive load or to productively struggle with rigorous assignments? And one way of sort of indicating that students are able to carry the cognitive load is when you're seeing less teacher voice in classrooms, less teacher scaffolding, and they're allowing students to truly think through, struggle with the academic content. And we continue to look at whether or not there's that correlation between our struggles thus far, because it's still a challenge for us, and we are working diligently towards that, with getting teachers to sort of deliver in a manner where they don't have to be the sage on the stage. And a significant number of our teachers are doing an outstanding job with that, but we still have some teachers, particularly at a secondary level, that have an area to grow, where, you know, students are not necessarily carrying the cognitive load. So, that's where we are at this time, but I'm confident, based on the support from the district and our school leaders, that we're going to move the needle there. Thank you.
I'm really glad you, I was just, if it's a follow-up relevant to what you just said, it was really great, because I was at the Callahan visit, and I think a lot of people are actually here that were part of that, to watch how that showed up and how that was coaching that was provided to the educators around that, that productive struggle, which I didn't know what that meant, but just that, that, you know, struggle of not knowing and having to find your path through without just being given the answer. So, I thought that was really neat to see.
If I can, if I can just remind everyone that we need to stay focused on our who, what, and why questions, and after that, we will move forward with our future questions. Thank you.
That was badly put on my part, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I have a question about the PD. So, it looks like it's off-the-charts better than it was in the past, at least that's the way I took it here, about the favorable responses from professional learning. Why do you think that is the case? So, when you look at the comments, and I think here it says, 81% of all schools increased the favorable responses for professional learning about SEL.
I think it's a testament to the fact that, you know, again, our leaders, teachers and staff in the district recognize the value of social-emotional learning. It's not only an added value to students, but it's an added value to the adults who are delivering on the curriculum, but also, while we have not yet implemented with fidelity, the adult portion, where the adults are benefiting. But the data that you just read with that 81%, it speaks volumes with the fact that they are invested. We're not quite where we need to be, that number should be 100%, but we're moving towards that.
And a follow-up, which is, how are we helping our SEL champions in each building? Are we, do they get a stipend, or how, how do you ensure, because you really, your infrastructure, your model is based on the SEL champions? So, how have you gone about establishing that network, and is that working?
It's working, certainly there, you know, we have some growing to do. Our two SEL champions are spending an inordinate amount of time delivering on and supporting the curriculum, and I know that they have their cadence of meetings with our SEL champions. And while I know that all of our SEL champions do this because they value and embrace the curriculum, but we have found a way to compensate them as well, and so, that's just an added bonus, yeah.
Appreciate that.
My question.
Can you hear me? My question, page three. What strategies are implemented to assist students in re-engaging, and regain focus on self-efficacy and growth? You mentioned that students may struggle to see how SEL lessons, including self-efficacy practice, let me see, I don't want to read the whole thing, leading to disengagement and minimal impact on self-efficacy growth. What is being, how are those students being supported if it's noticed that they are not engaging?
Yeah, thank you, that's an excellent question. And while I know, Board Member Alonso, we are speaking specifically to the SEL curriculum, we are seeing some of that disengagement from the curriculum, curriculum material in students in other subjects. And so, in this particular instance, just because of the timing, we are in our infancy of implementing the Wayfinder curriculum. And so, this requires a little bit more sort of cultural nuance than teachers are delivering this, I think. I want to hypothesize that, and I've also heard some of this echoed by members of the team, while teachers are becoming more conversant with the curriculum itself and the framework of the curriculum, I think there are still some opportunities to align the curriculum to cultural responsibility. So, you know, students are not necessarily yet seeing themselves in the content that is being delivered, because it's not necessarily being taught in a manner that probably values and engages and embraces the varying identities of every single student, right? We have students with a number of different, varying identities, right? Everything from race, ethnicity, to gender. And when we think about those five competencies, right, self-awareness, social awareness, this is so much more than just their academic pursuit. This is deeply personal to them, and so, I would hypothesize that this is one of those areas where our curriculum team, our SEL coordinators and SEL champions, will have to continue to coach and guide our teachers, based on the observations that they're making. Because ultimately, if our students are not seeing themselves in the content that is being delivered, then we're not going to sort of achieve the desired outcomes we have ourselves.
Thank you.
I have one last question. So, going over the interim Guard Rail 2B, that's on track, and that one's the percentage of favorable responses from teachers on the professional learning about SEL. That 2%, I think it's good, and I'm happy about that. I'm wondering, when we go down to where the other Guard Rail were, it's still, that's not on track, and that's from 6th to 12th graders, I know kind of how Jackie says that she went to Callahan and she saw the engagement of SEL. I was at Goodrell last spring, visiting, and the kids were engaged, and the teachers were engaged. Do we know, or can you find where it is? Is it middle school that's adapting better versus high school?
I do not have that, that data, right, as to whether or not it's middle school or high school where they are seeing, getting much more traction, but I'm encouraged by probably three things. One, the fact that there is investment, right? You know, talking about 81% of our teachers are feeling really good about the curriculum. Two, sort of the built-in layers of support that we have to make sure that this curriculum is implemented with fidelity. And then, the third is, you know, we've heard from our Wayfinder leaders, and they have shared that Des Moines Public Schools is amongst, I think, like the top 5% in the country, around really moving steadily towards implementing this with fidelity. Mind you, we are still in the beginning phases of implementing this curriculum. So, I'm encouraged by not only where we are on track, but certainly not discouraged by the fact that we are one percentage point away from actually being, or on track.
Dr. Roberts, on page three, you indicated competing initiatives, reducing the emphasis on SEL practices. Can you give us some context around what competing initiatives, so that as a board, we might have some context on what we can help prioritize when budget time comes? Or is this simply a list of all of the things that have to be done, and SEL is, and this curriculum is another thing on that list?
Yeah, you know, one of the sort of benefits of being in this role is, you know, I get to work with teachers and leaders who continue to exude this spirit of generosity of their time and efforts. And while they have a willingness to do that, you know, we are certainly operating in a time-constrained environment, and when I think about what teachers have been asked to prioritize, what they're going to be evaluated on, what we're expecting them to commit more time to, really aligned closely to our three board goals, academic outcomes, reading, and math. And so, we just don't have enough time yet. And so, the goal is for us to continue to work with our bargaining unit representatives, to work with building leaders and teachers, to try to find and build in some additional time, so that the SEL curriculum, which is a guardrail, it's a sizable investment from the board and district financially, and we also know that it is tremendous value when the SEL curriculum is implemented with fidelity. You know, when we've looked at some of the national research, even as I sort of make reference to our board goals, it is said that school districts over a period of time that implements a quality SEL curriculum can see double-digit gains in both reading and math. And so, we're hopeful, but I also want to make sure that I too am sort of acknowledging the importance of being patient. When we think about sort of the guidance around implementation science, it tells us that when you embark upon a curriculum initiative, it takes between three to five years to get real traction. And so, the fact that we're already getting a little bit of traction right now, even with some acknowledgement from the organization at Wayfinder, it certainly bodes well for what is to come. Just don't have enough time. So, competing priorities are board goals and everything else that relates to student academic outcomes.
I really appreciate in this, on page three, in strategies, it says intentional SEL professional learning for all adults in Des Moines Public Schools. And all adults was really important to me, and I guess I'd love to know how you are thinking about SEL training for so many of the staff that have student contact, such as, it could be bus drivers, right, our janitorial staff, our food service workers. Is there, how can you think about engaging them to be part of the movement?
Yep, so one of the investments we made is in asynchronous training. And at the beginning of the year, the team leading the SEL work made that offering to all of our teachers, 100% of our teachers. And so, while it's aspirational to get each of our 5,000 adults to sort of be exposed to the training, we are going to continue to move towards that, because we truly see the benefit not only to students, but to those adults who become familiar with the concepts and who eventually have some time to interact with it. So, we're not quite there, but I believe that the opportunity for both synchronous and asynchronous learning around the professional development will probably provide some support in that regard.
To follow up, can you explain what you mean by synchronous and asynchronous? And then, just to ask the question, have any non, have any non-teacher positions gone through a training?
I believe, yes, they are. So, I'll just look for some head nods on my team for confirmation, and yes, they are.
So, on page four, it does reference at the bottom of what's going well, that all new staff members engage in SEL training through the talent personnel team, including the guest educators.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Dr. Mayberry-Maze.
When you say asynchronous, what do you, what do you mean by that? Just in words, that I can understand.
Training where an adult does not necessarily have to be there, having direct teaching from a, an instructor, but there are options where they can be there, or you can look at it online, it's video-recorded, videotaped, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, can you explain what a guest educator is?
Yeah, a guest educator, some of our most valued employees and teammates, in some districts, they refer to them as substitute teachers, but we don't think that they're substitutes. We value the work that they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, on page three, you indicated time allotted for integration of SEL is sometimes dependent on individual teacher belief. I just wanted to ask for a clarification on that. That it's not a, if the teacher doesn't want to do it, they don't have to do it. This is, help me understand belief a little bit there, and kind of what you were after in saying that.
Thank you, Board Member Dix. No, I think when we reference teacher belief, it's not that they are not invested, but it's certainly how they themselves are delivering on the curriculum, based on maybe their experiences, right, based on what, how much they have on their plate. But we certainly will have teachers who are not, are at varying places of investment on the SEL curriculum implementation continuum. And so, that's where our district leaders and our school leaders will spend a lot of time coaching teachers on bringing them along, so that they understand that this is important. We're never going to say this is optional. We value this so much that it's never going to be optional. Quite frankly, every adult in Des Moines Public Schools should have a willingness and an appetite to embrace and engage with our SEL work. And if they're not, then we just need to have a conversation about how we can be helpful to them. But this is game-changing for students, and it's going to be game-changing for districts and the adults who serve them as well. Thank you.
Are we ready, Board, to move?
Let's see if Kim has any questions, or Jenna.
Or Jenna.
Or Jenna, Shiana, okay.
Ms. Knox and Ms. Mariturano, do you have questions? Ms. Knox and Ms. Marterano, do you have questions?
Thank you. No, thank you.
Then another. How about we move to our future questions?
How will you get feedback from teachers on, you know, after a year's worth of implementation, how it's going? Or how are you receiving feedback from teachers?
Yeah, certainly, I want to make sure that I'm engaging with our SCL coordinators who have a plan in place. But I know we are going to use some of the practices we currently have in place through surveys. And certainly, we've gotten some early anecdotal data. But I believe that this is something that we are going to partner and collaborate with our two SCL coordinators and get feedback from SCL champions.
I just want to piggyback on that question because on page five, the tactics for improving the numbers were additional training sessions with the curriculum coordinators. How are classroom teachers being rolled into that feedback to improve? The coordinators are obviously super important, but how are the teachers who are actually doing this on a day-to-day basis being rolled in there to give their feedback to make it better for everyone as well?
Yeah, just as a practice in the district, when we think about our scope and sequence for professional development, every person who will be impacted by a specific set of deliverables around PD will have a voice, will have a seat at the table to be able to offer some feedback. And I, knowing who our SCL coordinators are, I know that they are certainly committed to that feedback loop to ensure that they're valuing the voices of teachers in this pursuit.
Who are our SCL coordinators? Do you mind just shouting them out a little bit?
Both of them are here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Both of them are sitting here. Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, how will you continue to build on what's currently working? We know that you have very favorable responses from teachers. How will that, how will you work? What will you implement to continue this trend?
I think we'll continue to, again, utilize some of the practices that are currently in place, where we're getting traction. Certainly use the looping process whereby we make observations about when a curriculum is being delivered, provide feedback to teachers, make adjustments not only to what has been delivered, but to our assessment practices. Additionally, I think in terms of a much more granular response, I will certainly defer to the experts, in the case of our coordinators and our school leaders. But rest assured, while I have said and acknowledged that we are in year one of this process, I'm looking forward to what year two looks like because I believe that the team will have a really robust plan during our summer professional learning and professional engagements.
Thank you.
Just a curiosity question. How are students engaged when we give this survey? Do they understand the context for the questions that they're being asked? I just am curious as to whether the students know what they're answering and that this just isn't another thing that, you know, like, or that this is for this purpose in particular? Do we think students connect that dot?
I believe that they are, Board Member Dix. And one of the things that I want to do with Madam Chair's permission is we, what better person to sort of respond to some of these questions other than the people who are closest to the work? And so we have one of our school leaders who volunteered his time to be here this evening to share a little bit about his experiences. I don't know, is this the right time, or should we wait until he pulls up?
Let's finish our questions.
Do we have any other future questions from anyone else?
I have one. I have one question. It probably is slightly outside the framework of SOFG, but I think it leads perfectly into this. And that was, I mean, things are looking, maybe one's not on track, but it seems like it's moving in the right way. I'm just curious, Dr. Roberts or the SCL coordinators, what are you most excited about for this work going forward?
I'm going to now put them at a spot and have them pump and share one thing they're most excited about. She's going to punt it to Terrence.
Two, two of you. Yes. And also introduce yourself, just so everybody.
I'm Emily Myers.
Fair enough.
What are you most excited about with SCL implementation?
I'm excited about, especially as we engage more the professional learning of helping our adults see that this isn't another thing. As we learn that these are interpersonal, interpersonal skills that can help our students and our staff be better to things in which it's already on their plate. They're just another way of self-awareness, adaptability, you know, collaboration, empathy, agency, understanding their purpose. And all that is very much related to our students and academics and our staff and just how they're called to do their jobs. And so, and showing, and not addition to the work that they're doing as either students or staff, but also creating a better, healthy climate and culture. Because I want people to really enjoy where they are and feel seen, heard, and valued. And so I'm excited about the more and more we engage in this, the more opportunities that will allow us to be better in that capacity.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm excited about the excitement of our SCL champions and taking this back to their buildings. We've seen this trickle down from, you know, when they're in their meetings, engaging with Wayfinder, but also how they're taking it back into their buildings with, you know, aligning it with the academic content and seeing the excitement from the students when we're there doing our visits.
Thank you, Emily and Terrence. We are so proud of the work you're doing, and thank you for your leadership. It's outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I also, I was just going to point out too, thank you for asking that. The investment that the district made has been in years past, too. And I know that part of the problem was actually the implementation due to staffing challenges in terms of how it was going to roll out. And so I really appreciate the intentionality of having the two coordinators and cascading it down with the champions because it has a far better chance of sticking that way. So, thank you.
I was just going to offer a comment. Thank you so much for those comments. You know, I really appreciated that piece of it. I think sometimes we look at the data and it's truly just a data point. But hearing the verbatims and the narratives really help to bring color and life to the data points that we're always looking at. So that was really helpful to hear that from people that are actually doing the work every day.
Dr. Roberts, as we move forward, how can the board help?
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Alonso. Certainly, I think just your continued support around making sure that we are at least given some leeway around how we are not only investing in, but looking at best practice from around the country. And certainly, an SCL curriculum implementation is one of those best practices. Additionally, we know that many of these initiatives comes with sort of some financial investment. And so I think it would be really helpful when the board continues to sort of support the superintendent's requests and recommendations, going to be asking sort of to have some resource reallocation.
Are you anticipating a growth in spending for SCL this year?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to sort of manage all of our expectations, I'll say yes. The extent of that growth, I'm not aware of it.
Dr. Roberts, can you connect two initiatives maybe? And this isn't going to surprise anybody that I'm going to bring this up. How might a more robust cellphone policy impact the work that we're doing in the classroom to try to bring these, our SCL goals forward?
Yeah. Thank you, Board Member Dix. And that's an excellent question because I can actually sort of look at a connection to one of our five SCL competencies, and that is the one around self-regulation. Right? So moving students along the continuum to be better able to self-regulate certainly will impact how they are thinking about not responding to their cellphones every time they feel that buzzer vibration. And so again, it's just one of those unintended consequences of having a strong SCL curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair?
Thank you. I think, Dr. Roberts, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Really appreciate the board's indulgence in having Principal Shafar come forward and share a little bit about the experiences that they're having at DeRoosevelt High School.
Good evening. I'll try to be a little bit briefer than I was last time when we were so excited to talk about math. Roosevelt High School is super proud of the work that we're doing through collective commitments around our banner language of excellence through unity, equity, and integrity, empowering our students and staff to really be the change agents in our school to drive our culture in the right direction. So some highlights at Roosevelt. Our sense of belonging from the fall of 2023 to the fall of 2024 went up 10 points. For our students and student-teacher relationships went up 5 points from the fall of '23 to the fall of '24. Distinguished Roosevelt alum Dr. Dow Jock, who's a Castle Fellow, says that a gain year to year of 2 points is considered statistically significant. So we're really proud of those gains among the others as well. Some of the key actions that we've taken is that we have a student leadership collective. So it's a student group that we run policy, procedure, change ideas to, or take ideas from them in terms of implementing changes to how we do things at Roosevelt High School. We've had students lead PD for our staff as well as give us feedback on things that they would like for our staff to continue to learn on. This year, we instituted a new program called Roosevelt Culture Walks, where we bring students, families, community members together to walk all parts of the school to give us feedback on components of our collective commitments as well as these components of SCL. We have a ninth-grade advocate program where every ninth grader is assigned an adult in the building. We visit their homes during the summer and check in with them monthly on a number of issues to make sure that their transition to high school is going well. Given the focus on self-efficacy, we translated all of the self-efficacy questions from Panorama for the fall survey, and by the spring, every question on Panorama will be translated for our ELL learners. That way, we can actually see better data and come up with better action plans on how we can support those students. But I would be remiss if I didn't highlight some of the exceptional work happening across the entire high school network. It's not just Roosevelt that's doing great work. Every single high school is doing something wonderful, so I just want to shout them out quickly. Self-efficacy for our network of high schools grew by 2 points from the fall of 2023 to the fall of 2024. So shout out to everybody for their collective work in that area. I think another thing that's really important is that as a network, our behavior referrals are down 9% from last year to this year, which is a sign about responsible decision-making, self-regulation, and those elements of SCL. And I would say if I were to summarize the work that we're doing, we're all committed to PD around SCL, the inclusion of Wayfinder resources in our buildings, utilizing the SCL champion role to do data analysis and action planning, and providing transition supports. And one of the things that I think we appreciate at the high school level is that we're able to, as the building leaders, think about the context of our building and our culture and our students and our staff and what our needs are, and develop action plans with support from the district to move the needle in the way that we think is strategically most valuable. And so we're proud of the work that we're doing, and we appreciate the support that we're getting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, Board members, now we will, thank you, everybody, for, and thank you to our leaders who were put on the spot. You handled it very gracefully. We're now going to move forward with deciding whether, as a board, to accept the monitoring report. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Move Mayberry Mace.
We have a motion by Dr. Roberts and a second by Marterano. Is there any discussion, or does anyone have any questions? So again, the next piece will be voting to accept the monitoring report. I just want to call out one thing, and this is, I really, I don't know if Josie's in here, but for me, looking at this report, and I'm not sure if, I've just never noticed or it looks different, I really appreciated how the strategies were short and clear. I just found that very helpful, so thank you for that. It's, there, thanks. I just, I think it's really helpful to be able to look and say, okay, these are the five strategies that are being used, and so thank you for that. Any other feedback on the monitoring report?
Can I make a request?
Yes.
Can we have the pages numbered?
If you do.
The big files updated, they will be in the future.
They are.
Oh, on the left! Can you just make them bigger and on the right so that I can see them? I'm sorry.
Okay.
I clearly did not see that.
With that, Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
Ms. Knox? Okay, the report has passed 6-2-0. Consent items. As a reminder to, we're now going to move to consent. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with the speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the consent agenda?
No speakers.
Mr. Mayberry Mace, I believe you have the consent motion.
Yes. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $3,777,580.23.
We have a motion by Mr. Mayberry Mace. A second?
Second, Dix.
We have a second by Dix. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
The vote is approved 6-2-0. Next on the agenda are our public hearings. First item is F1, public hearing for B9285 Lincoln High School locker room improvements. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board review the proposed plans and specifications prepared by BBS Architects and Engineers for Locker Room Upgrades at Lincoln High School, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Move Mayberry Mace. Second, Dix.
We have a motion by Dr. Mayberry Mace and a second by Dix. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
Next, the vote is approved 6-2-0. Next item is F2, public hearing for B9282 Ruby Van Meter Roofing Project. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board approve the proposed plans and specifications prepared by Angelo Architectural Associates for Roof Repair at Ruby Van Meter, hold a public hearing, and approve the plans.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Dix, so moved.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Marterano. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
The vote is approved 6-2-0. Next item is F3, public hearing for FY2526 Downtown Calendar. The public hearing will come to order. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? If there, hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the board review the proposed fiscal year 2526 downtown school calendar, hold a public hearing, and approve the said calendar.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Dix, so moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Alonso. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Marterano?
Yes.
The vote is approved 6-2-0. Next, we have one item under other business. This is chronic absenteeism update, and I will turn it over to Dr. Roberts for the update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, I appreciate the time and opportunity to provide a rather brief update to the board and community, if you may, around chronic absenteeism. Certainly, chronic absenteeism has been in the public space in this past year more than ever around the country. It is believed that every single school district, regardless of geographic designation or location, continues to struggle with chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism, of course, is just defined as any student who misses more than 10% of the school year at any point during the said year. Here in the state of Iowa, Iowa Senate File 2435 is the law or policy guidance, if you may, that we as a district have been following and every other district in the state around chronic absenteeism. I'm excited to share this brief update just because there is such an amazing team of individuals, both at the district level and in our school buildings, that have really embraced this challenge and charge around how can we move steadily towards increasing attendance for all of our students. And by way of context, I certainly want to share some data with you all so you understand why this is not only a significant challenge, but we, as a school district, certainly with some approvals from the board, have reallocated- some approvals from the board, have reallocated resources to make sure we're addressing the challenge. What is going well thus far? Eleven of our school buildings have improved their chronic absenteeism by 10% or more when we look at the comparative data for the same time school period last year. One of the schools we want to shout out and certainly acknowledge, Principal Lord and team there is King Elementary, and they have improved their chronic absenteeism by about 20.6% compared to the same period last year. So Principal Renee Lord and team, they have cited some really solid practices that we can probably replicate. Lots of communication through newsletters, signage, letters at conferences, engagement with parents, a lot of shout-outs and acknowledgements to families regarding absentee data and the improvement there. I believe that they also have some really strong partnerships with some of our community partners. They conduct a lot of home visits, and so one of the things that I'm excited about is the adults who serve in the district are really committed to getting into and investing in the community. That includes our leaders, our teachers, our community school coordinators, our behavioral specialists, certainly our, and I'm drawing a blank.
Success caseworkers.
Not success caseworkers, bilingual family liaisons, who, I was trying to find the other name that they refer to themselves as. They call themselves the, the culture.
Brokers.
Brokers of the district. So I, I am excited about that name, so that's what I was trying to remember. But again, really excited to talk a little bit about chronic absenteeism, because how we as a district have approached chronic absenteeism is this acknowledgement and recognition that this is a symptom of things that are much greater, some of society's challenges, some of the vicissitudes of life, if you may, the things that some of our families are dealing with and faced with. You know, one of those barriers that we have been really thoughtful about is transportation. We've listened to the feedback from some of our parents, and we are one of the few districts, I think probably the only one maybe in, in the state. I don't want to be that braggadocio, but we, our Director of Early Childhood Education worked with our transportation team and associate soup, and we now have a pilot for preschool transportation, right? Where we are making sure that we remove that barrier from the parents that we are serving. Secondly, when we think of barriers, you know, currently, our students in the district this school year who have identified as being homeless or are facing housing insecurities, we have between 600 to 1,000 students. So our population of students that have identified as being homeless or facing housing insecurities is much larger than, probably more than 10% of school districts enrollment in the entire state. And so our approach, though, is one that clearly is getting us some traction as we look at the data that we are seeing. But we also want to acknowledge what is not going so well. And it, it, it's startling anytime we think about the number of students who are missing days. Eight of our schools have worse chronic absenteeism at this point of the school year, eight, right, of our almost 60 than they did last year. Six buildings have more than 50% of their students that are chronically absent. And so our team is ensuring that we have a required effort to address that. Chronic absenteeism, when we've looked at some of the data coming out of American University, I believe that was a report produced in 2021, they've indicated that student attendance is the single most important predictor of a student completing high school, right? Not academic performance, not student's intellectual ability, but student attendance. And so it is with that spirit that we are continuing to reallocate resources to, to address this issue. You know, I had the good fortune of sitting under Department of Education and directors, state superintendents, committee or council to sort of look at our chronic absenteeism challenge in the state. And we've had a lot of conversations and certainly have a number of partners who are supporting this effort, but let me just share unapologetically what our position is in Des Moines Public Schools, one, but also to share publicly what one of our biggest Our commitment is to ensure that we are not intending or trying to approach addressing the chronic absenteeism issue through a punitive lens or to legislate our way out of it. We see it as a symptom of much greater challenges and issues, and so we want to make sure that we have much more of a supportive stance as we are addressing that. A part of the Senate File 2435 that addressed chronic absenteeism requires us to send certified letters home to parents and ultimately to involve our Polk County District Attorney. And I, I have to tell you, as I think about my responsibility to be, have a fiscally-sung budget, the cost for those certified letters, which are mailed out sort of as soon as a student hits that nine-day mark, is about $81,000 already this year. That is significant, right? That's the kind of, sort of funding that can hire one or in some instances, two adults in the district. And so we're going to continue to engage in conversations with our Department of Education folks and make sure that our voices are heard. But outside of everything that I've shared from celebrations to our areas of struggle and, and, and growth, we are going to remain relentlessly focused on addressing the issue of chronic absenteeism, because we believe, given all, all of the investments right now in our academic and instructional program, if we have students sitting in seats, we're going to be able to move the needle. But if we don't, we're going to see the challenges widening. So, Madam Chair, that's my update for today around our chronic absenteeism and our efforts to address it.
Thank you for that. Does anybody, I have just one question. I don't know if you know the number offhand. How are we falling within the state average? Are we far higher or lower, about the same? This is definitely a statewide issue, not just a DNPS issue.
In terms of chronic absenteeism, while I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, what I can tell you is they are both suburban and rural districts who have either the same or higher chronic absenteeism rates than we do. And keep in mind that we are the largest school system in the entire state by far. The second largest is less than 50% of our kids, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roberts, there's going to be a little sarcasm in my voice here, so I'll just say that to start with. The lawmakers who passed that law gave us the money to pay for those certified letters, right? They, they handed that money over with it, right?
Yeah, board members, I know that's certainly rhetorical. Madam Chair, may I?
Don't engage. What I would say is we are so lucky to be a part of the Urban Education Network and a couple of other, the Iowa Association of School Board, and this has been lifted up across the board by all superintendents and board leadership as an issue to be addressed. So I'm hopeful that this year, there will be movement to address that.
I have a few points. And, and just one maybe concern, particularly after we made the statement that we shared earlier tonight. So on my end, what I hear, what I'm hearing from families is the concern when it comes to receiving those letters and what that means to them. So just the idea of a parent receiving something saying that they're going to be referred to the Polk County Attorney's Office, to them, that equals, I'm in trouble, and I'm not in just any trouble, I'm in legal trouble. And considering where we're moving, the direction that we're moving, and I am wondering about how the district will handle that, because we, in a way, are creating a, a great level of anxiety for families. Families, parents have said, you know, I cannot make my child go to school, I cannot physically grab him and take him, but then I'm going to be punished for that. How do we, how are we preparing to handle that? How is that being discussed?
Yeah.
Can you set the baseline? Like, can you just, to the point that Maria said, like, what are parents getting or what's, what, how are they receiving information?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Member Alonzo. And so while those certified letters is, is one piece of communication that gets to our parents, I, I, I want to make sure that it's understood that the first contact we have with our students and parents who are chronically absent is not when they get to the nine-day mark. There's so much else that happens before that. There's constant communication coming from a number of different adults in each of our buildings and from the district office. There are commitments to sort of gain some understanding about what our individual parents' personal situations, and our BFLs, our community school coordinators, they're knocking on doors and visiting homes to try to remove some of those barriers, right? Everything from appropriate winter clothing to making sure that they have access to our food pantry. So there's much more communication and contact with those parents. But I also want to acknowledge what you're sharing, the concern, it's one of the things that causes many of the adults in this room to lose sleep, and that is while we have to maintain a commitment to complying with Senate File 2435, we are striking this delicate balance of just finding ways to encourage parents, encourage our students, and to let them know, right, that we will stop at nothing to keep them safe. And in, in many instances, you know, it's a promise that we can make and, and certainly to deliver on, but certainly their fear is based on the fact that in some instances, particularly given our current political climate, we are not able to deliver on that, and it, and it, it's challenging. It causes us to lose sleep, knowing that every single parent of our 30,800 students in this school district send their students to knock on Des Moines Public Schools' doors because they believe that we can provide them with a quality education that will change their trajectory. And we certainly don't want that perception to be changed to one that suggests that for some reason, we are colluding with any entity or organization that doesn't have their best interests at heart.
Who, what is the, the definition of chronic absenteeism or how you become absent? Is that a district decision? And is it, is every school using the same criteria for what is an absence?
Yeah, every, well, two, it's a two-part question. So every school, every district in the country uses the definition of chronic absenteeism as that 10% of the time. The difference between the district, the Des Moines Public Schools, and the DE around how we characterize absence is different, right? The DE uses, I believe it's a half a day, that they use calculations to determine whether or not if a student misses, then they're absent. We are a little bit more granular in that we utilize minutes, instructional minutes.
And what about the reason? Does, is this, are the schools across the board consistent with the reason? Like, you know, the coding?
Coding, yep.
And if it counts as an absence or not?
Yeah, and I know you was probably alluding to one of the pieces of communication many of us have gotten, that's around how do we code medical and excused versus unexcused absences? And the answer is yes, our hands are kind of tied right now.
Got it.
Just to clar, just to clarify, the excused absences are, that's not part of this list, right? If it's an excused absence, is it still on this list?
Yes, it is. An absence is an absence, right? Correctly, yeah. If it's an, it's an absence, yep.
So just as an example, the golf team is taken out for a half or a full day because of a competition, they are absent from school, and they are counted as absent?
I believe that's a student, that's a school-approved or sanctioned activity, they will not be. Looking for head nods. That's accurate, yep.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for, I have one more.
Yep. You referred to the attendance team. What's the makeup of the attendance team? Who's part of the?
In terms of designations, that's a large team of folks. I would love to call on one of our teammates to come up, Melissa, maybe? Melissa Crum is our Director of Middle School Culture, Student Services.
Yeah, and I lead the district-wide attendance team. So we have, the team is made up of district leaders, it is made up of building administrators at all levels, we have people from our data and assessment team, we have a, we are so grateful for our Infinite Campus people that are on the team too, to help us with those things like coding, to make sure that the data we're actually collecting is accurate in terms of, is it a school event, is it an excused absence, an unexcused, all of those things? And then all of that information gets trickled out via the admin updates and then via emails to all of the administrators in terms of what's going well, what's not going well, and then some tier-one supports and strategies to try. And then each building has their own attendance team, and that's made up of an administrator, school nurse, counselor, let me think, administrator, school nurse, counselor, success. Help me out, who am I forgetting?
You're doing great.
Office manager, thank you, yes. And then if they're secondary, the attendance clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Marterano, any questions? Okay, we'll take one more, this campus.
So just going, just going over this presentation, Dr. Roberts, I am pleased with a lot of the schools that I would have thought that were on the list lower down on it, but when it comes to the percentage of change, I see a lot of good growth from last year, so I'm feeling that like the, that the administrators are pushing this. And do we have anything from 2021 to, or 22, 23 school year?
Trend data, we can certainly share trend data.
I mean, just, I mean, just to see if it has spiked every year or if this year, with the new law, just pushed everything through.
We will get that data for you, yes.
Okay, with that, we are going to, thank you, Dr. Roberts, for that update. We're going to move to items of privilege, and I'm going to take the privilege first by making just a few announcements. So, board members, I think I foreshattered it a lot, but please, every Tuesday in January, we will be meeting every Tuesday in January. So that's the first thing. The second thing is I am going through committee assignments and will be checking in with Skylar. I'm not sure there's going to be many changes, but if anybody has strong feedback, I think we're going to keep the structure of the committees and then also some ad hoc committees, which are just groups that are working on time-bound projects. And I think the last thing I wanted to share, I can't remember. So let's go around and see who has items of privilege. Sure, you can go, Maria.
I'm going to wait.
Okay.
I'm going to wait.
I just want to give a couple shout-outs to a couple of our community school coordinators from East feeder, North feeder, Hoover, and then Roosevelt feeder. They have been doing a lot of things with groups in the high schools, the, what you mentioned before of the, I went blank.
Attendance?
Walks. Like donations. So they've done food drives and scarves and hat drives and just thanks to the community school coordinators, because I think those are the ones that are pushing our high schoolers to get that yellow cord for graduation.
Yeah. So I'm reminded of, at our last school board meeting, there was a comment made by the teacher from Merrill Middle School, Blake Hammond, and it was a, a good reminder that we have to be appreciative and thankful and, and the, the impact that that has on us. So as I reflect today, this being my first meeting as board vice chair, I'm still in my first year as a board member, I'm one week away from my very first year, year in my professional career at Grand View. All of these first, I want to dedicate my report today as a moment of personal privilege to say a special thank you and acknowledgement for all of our first-year educators, students, staff, and leaders within the district. I know it is not hard being in your first, I mean, at all, whether that is working in the, in the schools, working directly with students, or doing things that help us move forward. So thank you for all of you who are in your first year, whether that is truly first, organically, or maybe you transferred recently and you're in your first role or a first new role. Thank you so much. And then also, to those of you who are not in your first, thank you as well, because you play just as critical of a role in serving as mentors and guides for those first to be able to continue to do the good work. Thank you.
Ms. Marterano? Ms. Marterano?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Roberts and his team. They engaged in a full day of professional development around student outcomes-focused governance and the fact that you and your team dedicated a full day to this learning is truly a testament to your commitment to moving the needle for students, the students of Des Moines Public Schools, and I'm truly grateful for you and your team for making that commitment.
Thank you. Maria's going to go last, and so I think I just want Maria's going to go last, and so I think I just want to actually say thank you to Maria. You know, one of the things we're really lucky as a board is we all bring amazing and different perspectives to the board, and yet we can always count on Maria to remind us that it's really important to pay attention to things in the community and how it's impacting our students and our families and elevating the political tensions around a really significant issue that's happening in our community is important. And I want to thank you for reminding us all to be bold and be brave and remind our community how much we care about them.
Thank you, thank you.
I would like to say thank you to administration and staff and students from Harding. I attended a, como se dice, Dr. Landin?
Instructional round.
Instructional round. I was going to say a walkthrough.
Good enough.
An instructional round. It, it's very humbling to see teachers work the way that they do. And so thank you to all the teachers, but specifically to Harding. I have so much respect for you. And thank you for tolerating a group of, you know, people coming through your classroom and exposing students to, you know, just random strangers looking over their shoulders. That was really strange, weird for me. I was really uncomfortable doing that. I felt like I was invading people's spaces. And I can, because I'm Latina and I'm a Hager and I like to be close to people. But that day, it just felt incredibly inappropriate and just invasive. And so thank you for tolerating that. A week later, I believe, I attended, I was invited to Ms. Moose's class and at Harding for Career Day. And they are very interested, her class is very interested in having you visit their class, Mr. Roberts, Dr. Roberts. So I want to say todo mi respeto, all my respect to all of you educators working with students each and every day. You're amazing people, and thank you for what you do.
Okay.
Any other board members? Dr. Roberts, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board, certainly for your items of privilege. And I have to tell you that it's certainly heartwarming to hear the consistent theme of acknowledging and recognizing all of our teachers. The work that they do each and every day is certainly stellar. And I am also filled with your commitment to actually joining our team on instructional rounds. And the intent behind that is certainly make sure we bridge in the gap between the decisions that are made at the day at the board table and what is happening in the schools. And so you all are certainly leading the way as a board around going beyond governance. The team that is leading that work is our Chief Academic Officer and our Directors of Teaching and Learning, Directors of Elementary, Middle, and Secondary School, all of our principal supervisors. These are individuals who are truly committed to keeping, what we sometimes refer to keeping the main thing, the main thing. And that is how do we improve the instructional practices and actually improve in, in, in Des Moines Public Schools? And they spend an inordinate amount of time in classrooms. And it's not from the lens of evaluating, right, our teachers. It's going in to observe and provide support to them so that they can get better at their craft. And one of the additional benefits is, is last year we set an expectation for school leaders to spend at least, this is a chance for me to probably give the board a quiz, I don't get to do this often. What percentage of their time?
Seventy percent.
Look at that, seventy percent of their time. We're getting traction there. And our principals are at varying places around that commitment, but with so much spright, I'll say that all of them are moving the needle around how they're spending their time. And there are some gaps, you know, we just got from our Teaching and Learning team, Suzie Tallman and Peter LeBlanc, a survey that talked about and highlighted how principals are spending that time. And we have some areas in which we can get better, particularly at the district office. We have some barriers to remove from principals' plates so that they can truly invest in that seventy percent of their time, and we're going to continue to work in that. But our commitment to instructional rounds and the instructional core is unwavering, and we're beginning to get some of the traction from that as well. Last thing I want to share during my superintendent's update is we are embarking upon some really big initiatives, some groundbreaking initiatives, some of them are unprecedented. And that is because as a school district, we have looked at and decided, based on our realization that we are not serving all of our students well, and we haven't done so for decades. And so there are three big initiatives that members of the community, you're going to continue to hear about. One is the fact that we are in the final stages of a five-year strategic plan. It's going to be our first strategic plan in almost 20 years. And the goal is to roll that out in January with implementation probably coming in, in February, February 1st. Additionally, we want to thank the board. I want to thank you all for your push around Goal Three. Goal Three, we believe, is going to be a game changer for us in terms of the work we're embarking upon, right? Making sure that every single Des Moines Public Schools graduate is well-prepared for their post-secondary pursuit. And so we have a team that is really working diligently and ensuring that that sort of is realized with interim goals in June of next year so that we can rule this out in the fall of 2025. And thirdly, you know, you're going to continue to hear this sort of chant and sermonizing of reimagining education, reinvigorating schools. And this is a really ambitious and bold initiative to ensure that we are really showing our commitment to serve students differently and to provide each and every child who knock on our doors with a world-class education. And some of the sort of decisions that we're going to have to make as a district and as a board will put many of us in places of discomfort. But I want to say this. What we are doing right now and have done for the last 20 years hasn't served us well, has not inspired students to optimize their potential. Whenever the words that I'm about to say comes out of my mouth, I lose sleep. Our graduation rate is 72%. It's educational malpractice if we continue to do the same things we have done for the last 20 years and expect a different outcome. So those three big initiatives, you're going to hear a lot more about in the coming weeks. And certainly we are looking forward to engaging in a really prudent way with the community, our strategic plan, getting better traction on Goal Three. Thank you, board, and our reimagining education, reinvigorating schools plan. So looking forward to the work ahead. I know that this is our last official meeting as of now for this calendar year. And with that said, I have tremendous gratitude as we go into the holiday for every single teammate, every employee who serves our students. And I hope, have the same gratitude for all of our community partners as they continue to show up as champions and ambassadors for the Des Moines Public Schools. So thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening. We always really appreciate when you're here. And it's actually great because we can reference and ask questions of people that are here. We're going to take a very quick break, five-minute break, and then we're going to move into an open work session to receive a presentation on the FY 2026 budget. Then we'll have a brief, then actually after that, we're going to move into closed session on personnel. So we are not doing, as a reminder, the mission and vision work session. So five-minute break, let's aim for that. And then I believe we'll, Shashank-san, okay, great. Do we have Kim on? And is Jenna on yet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay. So, where's Maria? So we're going to get started. I, I want to just, for, for board colleagues, just maybe do a few minutes of framing how we think about the budget conversations. So I think if you looked at Shashank's presentation ahead of time, there's part, kind of part education and then part kind of assessment of how all of this process is going to shake out. A couple of things that I think are going to be important. I really encourage you, for those of you that want to dig into the budget more, if you haven't already signed up, we have an optional session that's being offered by Margaret Buckton, who's going to kind of do an additional deep dive into our numbers and really talk about some things that I know Shashank brings up at a high level around cash reserve policy and some of the other ratios that are important to understand as it relates to our finances. And that is taking place, I think, on the next Friday. So, and also, if not, there's lots of recordings and resources to our board members as it relates to school finance. The second thing is, one of the things that was done in the past to try and help anticipate the big themes of the board in terms of requests for information was to just try and get a handle, when you look at the budget, what are the things that are really important to you to understand as it relates to certain investments? And so I'm going to be sending out a message with some specific questions to better get a sense of what all of you want to know. And then we'll see where there's areas of consensus. And so we can give that guidance to Dr. Roberts ahead of time to, to work that into the presentation schedule and allow everybody to be as prepared as possible. So I think with that framing, Shashank, we're going to turn it over to you for this work session.
Thank you. I, since I'm presenting from India, I'm going to be greeting the community and the board the way we greet in India, which is by saying namaste. Going to the next, going to the next slide. This is the agenda that I have planned to cover today, which is, what is the calendar of events? The School Finance 101, and with Jakita briefly. The 24 final books, because we don't have anything like Godrej's now for the financial books. So I wanted to share that with the board. The 25 updates and the initial projections for 2026. So turning over to the next slide, the next slide, please. So here, I just wanted to highlight, there are a lot of details and dates, but what I really wanted to highlight is the November 26 date, as we know, got postponed to today because the 26th meeting really went long. But the other things that I wanted to highlight, February 17th to 19th is when we will be having our community discussions. And these discussions are far earlier than what we have historically done. The March 4th date is where we set the hearing dates, which is for March 25th and April 15th. And March 5th is when we send the proposed tax notice to the State Department of Management. And 14th is when it gets published in the press. March twenty-third is going to be a stand-alone meeting, where the proposed tax notice public hearing will be held. On April seventh, we will have the virtual forum, which will be recorded and released and published for the community at large, and they'll have time a week to submit any questions that they have, if they have not already submitted us questions, when we have presented on between February seventeenth and nineteenth. And the board will, uh, adopt and certify the budget on April fifteenth, and we have time till April thirtieth to send it to the Pope County auditor. Going to the next slide. This is the agenda that we plan to cover for the work sessions. The November twenty-six, which I said has been postponed to today. Uh, on January twenty-first, we intend to cover the balanced budget and the property tax rates. February eighteenth, it's a reemerging education and capital investments, uh, that, that, that we are planning to have, and what is the cost of the very strategic initiatives. And then, March fourth, we're talking about SMART goals, twenty-five investments, and twenty-six, and April first is the same for Godrej's. And then, the budget adoption will happen on April fifteenth. Uh, the community discussion, which I said between seventeenth and nineteenth, we did not get enough traction in the previous years that we have had, so we have decided to cut it down only to two, which is on February sixteenth, that cover, and February nineteenth, that link. And we will have our translators and interpreters, our BFLs will be there, both for the Spanish-speaking group and the Swahili-speaking group. Next slide. Next slide. So, this is at a very high level, to give an idea that the school finance is definitely not simple. We have tremendous amount of complexity over here, but at, at a high level, we are showing what are the funding sources? What are the different fund accounts? And these fund accounts, which are being shown over here in this slide, is very simple. I'll go back into a little deeper in the next, following few slides, and what are the users of funds that the district can really put those funds to? So, next slide. Something that we have to understand is that the school district cannot spend money on anything that they need or want. This is fairly dictated by state and federal guidance. And we can spend the expenses, only on those allowable expenses, even if those expenses are not the highest priority. It is also not possible for us to move funds from one to the other, and we have to get board approval if we want to do that. Next slide. So, this is the fund structure. It looked fairly simple on the previous slide, but under each one of them, we have multiple funds that we have to maintain a P and L for each one of them. So, the most important fund that we'll cover is the operating fund, which is the general fund, but under special revenue, as you can see, we have five different funds, management, Pepper Pearl, capital funds, we have the Save or the Statewide Penny, then we have the debt service, and then we have the proprietary funds, under which we have both enterprise and internal service funds, and then we have the fiduciary, which is the trust funds. And I'll cover them in details, uh, in the few, uh, next slides, so I'm not gonna talk about them at this point in time. To the next slide. The fiduciary funds are basically in which the district adds, acts as a trustee or an agent for the benefit of others. So, this is like the pension trust that we are maintaining here. Next slide. Proprietary funds, on the other hand, are very similar to a private business, and I think all of us have heard, which are the proprietary funds, like food and nutrition, childcare, home building, student order body, all of them. Here, the costs incurred have to be met by the revenues generated for each of these different funds. And then, we have the internal service funds, which are basically the, where one department or a group provides goods and services for the benefit of other departments, like a self-insurance, risk management, and print shop. Next slide. The governmental funds are four major categories. The operating fund, which is the general fund, which we always talk about. Then, we have the special revenue, and I'm only going a little fast, so if board or anyone wants to stop me for questions, please feel free to do that. The special revenue, which is the management, Pepper Pearl, student activity, and governmental trust. Then, we have the capital projects, which is the same, or Statewide Penny, and then we have the debt service. And I'll go into a little bit more details in there, in, in, in case the board wants to know, but, but at a high level, Pepper and, uh, Pepper serves for any repair and maintenance. Your Pearl is more for students, a playground. The Save is for all the capital projects, and we don't have any debt service at this point in time. So, going to the next slide, to the next slide. So, where do we get our revenues from? Our revenues are derived from state aids, local funds, which also includes property taxes, sales taxes, federal funds, and program fees. As you would see, the total revenue of all these funds is six hundred and nine million dollars, and general fund is the largest component of that, which is seventy-eight percent. Whereas, sources for general fund revenue happens to be four, is basically around four seventy-four million dollars, and as what we can well imagine, ninety-three percent of that is coming from state and local sources. Those are the two largest sources. Federal funds used to be a larger share when we had ESSR, but now we are back to normal, which is approximately seven percent. So, where, how is the state funding answered? It is purely based for revenue programs on per-student funding. So, the legislature basically sends a supplemental state aid increase year over year, and I'll get into a little bit more details in the future slides. Then, we have categorical funding, to give an idea, it is, say, like gifted and talented. Even though it is part of general fund, it can only be spent for expenses to meet that particular category. And then, we have the weighted funds, where we get an additional weight on top of what we're getting under the regular funding program for programs like special education and ELL.
Shashank, a quick question.
Yes, please.
Can you go back a slide? The weighted programs, where, where would the point-five pre-K, is that in weighted programs, or is that, yeah, where is that? Or is that a totally different thing?
So, that will be coming as part of the per-student funding, Jack, here. The, 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 the weighted would be more for ELL and special education.
Okay. Where did you say it would come from, where it is?
Under the regular, regular programs.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. So, talking about property taxes, these are the key categories that I had mentioned before, which is basically management levy, Pepper Pearl, and the debt service. And debt service, at this point in time, we don't have any, but if you decide to issue geo-bonds under reemerging education, then we may start having that. General fund, I want to highlight, is set by a formula decided by the Department of Education. We do not have any influence on this at all. The only influence that we have is student enrollment. Management fund is something that is established by the board. And, and management fund is where we use money for our risk management, or if we have the early retirement schemes, uh, and things like that. And, uh, items like Pepper, Pearl, and debt service, they're not typically adjusted earlier, I mean, annually. These funds are approved by the board or the community, and then they continue unless they are changed. So, this has been the historical trend for the last three years, as far as property taxes goes. Something to highlight over here would be that in FY twenty-three, our property tax included a budget guarantee because we had been declining enrollment. So, there is a reason why our property tax rates have been coming down. If you go historically, even before this year, we were somewhere between seventeen and eighteen. So, we have, as a district, been reducing the property tax rates. Going to the next slide.
I have another clarifying question on that.
Good, good.
So, the reason it went down from twenty-three to twenty-five is based on a formula, and in, and part of that formula is enrollment? Or was that a choice? Was it a, was it a choice by the district, as opposed to a formula decision?
No. So, general funds, we don't have a choice. The only thing, no, actually, we have choice for nothing, because even the budget guarantee is decided by a formula set by the Department of Education. So, I, I think a typical example in general fund, just to highlight and clarify what you're trying to ask Jackie. So, dropout prevention, or DOP as we call, that funding is a categorical funding, which is part of the general. And the way that amount is calculated is based on student enrollment, and which is why I said that is the only driver that we have for the general fund. What is the per-pupil cost, which is decided by the DE based on the supplemental state aid, times five percent? Five percent is set, the supplemental state aid is set by the state, we don't have choice, the only thing we have influence on is number of students. So, that is how the, uh, the, the, the DOP budget is calculated, and that is how all the different things which form part of general are calculated, purely formula driven. Does that help, Jackie?
It does. I'm gonna just ask the question differently one more time, just to make sure.
Sure.
That when, when the tax rate is established, in, not in partnership, but amongst the partners, right, City of Des Moines and others, the board's role is to approve, but there is no choice to increase taxes, right? It's all based, y- you're given a number that's connected to enrollment, so there is no objectivity, there's no subjectivity, it's, this is what the, this is what the number is. Am I asking it the right way?
I think you're asking the right way, and I'll clarify a little bit more for the benefit. So, management fund is one fund in which we do have flexibility. We can increase it as much as we want, or decrease it as much as we want. Pepper is something that we had gone to the community to vote, I think, almost four or five years back. There are two different components in, in Pepper. Uh, one is a standard, which is set by the DE, and the, the additional amount, and I will misquote, so I don't wanna give the exact number, but it is part of one point six seven, uh, is approved by the board. So, so that is why I have mentioned over here, board approval for both management and Pepper. Pearl was set by the district, or we had submitted it through the board approval twenty, thirty years back, and there's probably just a handful of school districts in the state of Iowa which have Pearl. And debt service is for the geo-bonds or the general obligation bonds, in case the district decides to issue. But that has to be approved by the voters, and we have to get sixty percent support from the community to go for that.
And the reason we're at zero is because we've paid down, we have, we've, we've paid off or paid down any, um, any debt, yeah?
My, to the best of my knowledge, at least for the last two decades, we have not had any debt service. Prior to that, Jackie, I'm not too sure, but, but my understanding is, at least for the last two decades, the district has never, ever gone to the community for debt service. The only bonds that we have gone to are revenue bonds, and revenue bonds are paid from the sales tax money that we get, or the save that I had mentioned earlier.
Great. Thank you. Sorry to take us down a rabbit hole.
Not a problem at all, Jackie. So, annual expenditure by total funds is approximately six hundred and forty-two million dollars, and as one would imagine, general fund being the largest, is six, uh, seventy-nine percent of that. Uh, next slide. Uh, the expenditures of general fund is five hundred and five million dollars, and as we well know, the two single largest contributors to that is salaries and benefits, which accounts for eighty-three percent. And that eighty-three percent, I would say, is fairly standard across the country. Most districts will range somewhere between eighty, eighty-five percent. So, fairly standard. Uh, next slide. So, under the general fund, if you will see, the single two largest items contributing for seventy-four percent of our expenses are related to instruction, and that is what it should be. A G and A, as you can see, is fairly small, it's just one percent over there. Next slide. So, now, if you see, this basically, to some extent, helps, what are the sources of our funding? What are the different fund accounts, and where is it that we can really spend the money on? So, when, if you, if you were to flow through these different colored graphs, this gives you a full idea, like property taxes, it flows over here to your management fund, it flows over to your special revenue funds. So, if you follow these things, these different colored graph lines, it shows what is the funding source, which fund it goes to, and if you see, like, on the general fund, you can see we pay for staff salaries, utility, books, computers, and all this kind of different things. So, we're trying to show it rhetorically, where exactly is the sort of funding coming from, and where can we spend it? Next slide. So, spending authority is a term which we always talk about, and I wanted to spend some time over here. The district is not limited, as far as general fund goes, on the amount of cash that we have, but the spending authority that we have. This is the only fund on which this restriction applies. All of the funds are limited by the cash that those funds hold versus some, a concept like spending authority. Next slide. So, if you see, what has been happening to a spending authority, and why is it so critical for us? If you go back to seventeen, I've tried to show two different line graphs, one is with categoricals, and one is without categoricals. So, blue is with categoricals, and beige or yellow is without. To me, looking at it without categoricals is more important, because the categorical can be spent only for that particular category, and we don't have hundred percent freedom, like a dropout prevention, gifted and talented, and all those types. So, in seventeen, we were coming extremely close to zero percent. And there is standard, statute of guidance from the DE that in case any school district goes negative, the superintendent and the chief financial officer will have to go and present to the Department of Education, saying, what is it that we are going to do going forward to make it positive? They gave us an opportunity for, I think, a few years, and if you are able to fix, they pretty much take over and run the school, and we, the district definitely did not want to be in that situation. The good news was, we were not challenged in eighteen and nineteen, because the Department of Education used to look at the spending authority, including categorical. In nineteen twenty, I challenged Dr. Ahar, and I told him, I said, we need to start looking at without categoricals, because that is not something that we really should be looking at, because we can't influence it. So, we started tracking it separately, and today, the DE is doing exactly the same thing, and they're tracking it without categoricals. So, we were very low when the decision was made that we need to do something to fix our budget, and as you can see, we have steadily improved, and at that point in time, the board has decided that our target needs to be at fifteen percent, which is approximately two months of expenses in case some disaster happens.
What is the, what is, what is the recommended number for, for district?
Number is somewhere between ten and fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this is a very unique concept to Iowa, so we can't even benchmark against different states, but in Iowa, it is somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. So, the board decided fifteen percent, and as the board can see, we are much higher than fifteen percent today. So, we are in a very healthy situation. Does that help, Jackie?
Yes, thank you. Can you, can you, um, is there any way to quantify in dollars that seven Can you can you um, is there any way to quantify in dollars that seven percent?
So one percent is approximately around six million dollars. So if you had twenty percent, we are talking about approximately one hundred and twenty million dollars. And this is back to the envelope math, Jackie.
So my my math teacher would be appalled, but it's seven times six. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Those, no, seven, what is seven times, what is seven, Jackie?
What is seven? Why did it come up with seven?
Because it's seven.
That's the difference.
Oh, yeah, the difference, yeah. One, one is six million, one one percent is six million and it looks like we're about seven percentage points above fifteen.
Right?
Gotcha, gotcha, yes. So seven times six would be forty-two million dollars above then, yes, in that case, but I think we are closer to twenty-one. So I would say six times six is approximately around thirty-six million dollars higher.
Got it.
But in that range, thirty-five, forty million dollars, yeah, perfect. So it's too bright and early for me, so I did not track where you were getting the seven percent for from there. So so spending authority calculation, how does that, how's the amount calculated? The biggest driver is number of students and as I will share in in the future slides, we all know what the historical trend of the enrollment has been. That is multiplied by cost of people and that gives you the current spending authority. And in a very simplified fashion, the total spending authority is basically your current year spending authority, which is on the on the left side, which I just explained, plus whatever is the surplus or deficit from previous years, that gives you the total spending authority. And something to highlight is so that October twenty twenty-four enrollment will be used for the next year's budget, which we which we are talking about. Next slide. So how can we influence spending authority? Spending uh through supplemental state aid, which we as a district or any district does not have influence on, increase in student enrollment, which is something which we are working on, and increase in miscellaneous income. And miscellaneous income is has historically been a very small share, except when the S R funding was coming because that was categorized as part of miscellaneous income. Next slide. So if these are the three drivers, what has been happening with the supplemental state aid? It used to be six point two-two percent between seventy-three and ninety-four. It has dropped to less than three percent between ninety-five and fourteen and in the last decade, it's just a tad bit higher than two percent. Last year was two and a half percent. So the S S A has been reducing significantly from the time we started implementing it from seventy-three till 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 this year. And this is something that the district cannot influence. Next slide shows the enrollment trend. So we had a peak of thirty-three thousand students and now we had around thirty thousand eighty, thirty-six students. So this shows how our enrollment trend, which is the the driver that we can control, uh, and and this is this is where we are today. The next slide shows year by year, what has been the total decline. So if you see over here, except for the last two years, our enrollment has been decreasing for the five years prior to that. So we at least have bucked the trend, which is a great sign, even though it's significant, I mean, it's marginally higher, but it is it's a trend in the right direction. And the total decline of two hundred and twenty-two thousand stu- two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two students, we have tried to show on the on the right hand side, what is it equate to? Almost a large high school or three middle schools or six elementary schools. And I think this is one of the things which really triggered, one of the things I'm saying, which triggered reimagined education discussions. Our footprint had become very large, political footprint. The next slide. And as I was saying, the miscellaneous income, S R was the single largest source, which has sunset on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So that funding is no longer available to the district. Next slide. We can skip that slide, next slide. So budget adoption and certification requirements, the most important thing is, as I highlighted in the slides, a little few, a few slides earlier, we cannot exceed spending authority limit, which includes both the current and the carryover spending authority. The budget must be balanced and the property tax rate has to be set. Next slide. So now let's go to the final books for F Y twenty-four, which we closed. The most important things I would highlight is the two variants, both of them are positive. One is the federal, I'm not talking about the smaller ones, property taxes, state tax, and this is basically talking about revenue. The federal funds, we it improved because our title programs have improved and we had E E C F, which was basically for technology and we had used that to purchase laptops.
What? Just just on the on the federal piece? So when when Dr. Roberts, when the changes in title programs were made, meaning it was distributed differently in our district, we didn't have more money, we had the same total, we just distributed it differently. It's not like we, like, how did we get an increase in title programs?
That is correct.
So did we, did we access more?
We did not.
Okay.
Uh, Jackie, can I can I take over? Dr. Roberts, can I take over over here?
Yeah.
Thank you. So two things that happened, yes, we we have decided to redistribute the funds differently, but that does not increase the total amount of federal funding from title. We had two reasons why it increased. One was during the pandemic, we had carryovers which the to which the D E had approved. And the second thing is, even at a federal level, the funding had increased a little bit. So those two were the main drivers which increased the federal spending limit.
Should we expect to see another a year-over-year increase or no? These were just outliers because of COVID?
Jackie, you're going into very sensitive area.
Okay.
And the reason why I say that.
Probably not.
You 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 got the drift, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, and the other was basically our our investments, which we which I had shared that we have done some great investments and our returns have been good and the break fix program that we had implemented a few years back and that is driving really good results for the district. Next slide. Uh, so general fund expenses, again, I'm not going to touch the first two items, actually the first item, which is very small. The support services, which was around four, four, four million dollars higher, was largely driven by hiring a few additional staff, whether it was for E S E S L or restorative safety things or the different things that I mentioned on the right hand side. So there were support services staff that were hired. Uh, and and the others were really small, so I'm not going to talk about that. Next slide. So based on the increased revenue and the and the expenses, our overall fund balance increased by twelve point seven million dollars. Next slide. So the board had asked us as to what are the expenses in F Y twenty-five that had not initially been approved by the board in the budget process. So this that basically captures that, and this is four point six million dollars. The reimagined education, we know the big project, this is additional fees which are being paid both to the communication company as well as additional amounts being paid to R S P R consultants. Safety, one and a half million dollars was largely driven by a decision made at the executive cabinet that we will hire seven additional F T Es and also the crossing crossing guard expenses had increased because they were unable to hire people at the old rates. We have implemented a a re review or rethinking of the strategic plan for the district, so two hundred thousand dollars, which was for the new leaders. Implemented increased training programs, largely the pathway programs for teachers and administrators for the masters in P S T. And then there was the Monticello program that we implemented, plus the crisis prevention institute. The D O P deficit, which is one point six million dollars, is largely driven by the hire of community school coordinators, which was initially being funded by S R and they have continued after the S R funds have gone away.
If I could ask a clarifying question, so we all remember the hard decisions that had to be made uh around that. And so are you saying that we spent one point six million more on community school coordinators than we budgeted?
So Jackie, these were being purely funded from S R funds. And when the money was being divvied up between different funding streams, the plan was that once the S R funding will go away, these positions will no longer exist with the district. That did not happen.
Right.
Even after the funding went away, these positions are being funded by the district.
But wasn't that part of our budget when we approved it? I mean, wasn't that?
When the budget was approved, there was a big plan and if you remember, the community school coordinators had come both to the board and to the management of the district and there was a very huge discussion which had happened related to that. And the plan was earlier not to really continue having them as part of the district, but we decided that they will continue as part of the district express.
Yeah, thanks. I think that I forgot that the timing was we had passed the budget already, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's that's why it shows up as a deficit because it wasn't, it wasn't budgeted the way we thought it should be.
That that is correct. Next slide. So F Y twenty-six, just wanted to highlight, how are we giving it up as far as what is it that we need to do it? So what I have shown is what are the general fund expense, remove S R because that's gone away. So the total general fund is four sixty-nine, removing the S R. And if you want to continue flat, how do we need to handle it? I had indicated what is the total salaries and benefits, which is two seventy-seven plus one twenty-three and the balance amount remaining, basically is nine million dollars from four sixty-nine. Go to the next slide.
Shashankam, let's go back, let's go back two slides to that, the D O P one point six million dollars. I want to make sure that we're giving the board visibility into what is our current reality there. So the D O P deficit of one point six million dollars, what does that mean for us as a district? Where is that money going to come from? And what what do we have to do sort of to move forward? And then finally, um. Where was the sign, the significant percentage of that those funds, what was it spent on? Resources or personnel? Can you give some visibility into that?
So. We we have as a group looked to see where exactly that money has been spent and there was the position that I mentioned about the community school coordinators. And for F Y twenty-six budget, there has to be some hard decisions that we as a district have to make so that we are not having a similar discussion as far as D O P goes about this budget. So those discussions are happening and as the budget discussion is going on at this point in time, we will be having more detailed discussions. This at this point in time, the funding is happening from general fund. All these expenses on these slides, such slides that I'm presenting are being, the the funding from general fund is being used. Does that help, Dr. Roberts?
Yeah, that's helpful. I I want us to put a pin in that because we're going to come back to that discussion um at a later date, but I wanted to make sure that the board has a sense of where we are and that this is something on this high priority for of us, for us.
I'm going to put it in layman's terms, what I think you're saying, which is this one point six million that we didn't anticipate, we need to anticipate in the next budget and or grow it if we want to keep the program.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Accurate, accurately said, yes, yes. And in case we don't continue, then we'll have to make some hard decisions. The next slide. So if we have almost the the split that I showed in the previous slide between salary benefits and other expenses, if we have a two and a half percent increase that we give to the staff, that equates to almost seven million dollars. The benefit increase, the historical trend has been around seven with seven percent, that's going to be close to eight and a half million dollars. And other expenses, if we grow by just one percent, which is shy of a million dollars, we get to appro- approximately sixteen million dollars just to remain flat. Now, this does not include any potential potential adds that we may have, whether it is an increase in programs, F T Es or safety. And there would be increases in the safety program because on the few slides back that I showed, that uh this was an unbudgeted expense of around one and a half million dollars for safety. The way we decided is we will do it in a phased approach, half of it was done in twenty-five and the other half will be done in twenty-six. Uh, the the safety team is working on the final numbers as to what the numbers will be. So that amount, any F T Es programs that will be there, which the team is working on, we'll have better visibility sometime in January and that number sixteen point two took a change. Next slide. So how are we going to find some of those expenses? Since the historical trend for S S A has been two percent, four point seven million dollars is going to be coming as a reduction for that. Even though our student enrollment has increased, we have bucked the trend, the students served, there is actually a decrease. So what is the difference in enrollment the students serve? This includes any open enrollment out. That is what had reduced it. So even though our enrollment is increased, the students who are enrolling out has increased, it's a negative of two hundred and fifty-eight students, which equates to approximately two million dollars. The E S A for the students, uh, which we get around twelve hundred dollars for students is is going to help us by a million dollars. And this is where I wanted to have a discussion, that if we decide to use the increased spending authority, the board had said fifteen percent, we are almost at twenty, twenty-one percent. So if we want to use one percent of the spending authority versus continuing to build that amount, there would be a six million dollars offset. So that is what equates to approximately around nine point seven million dollars, which will reduce that amount to sixteen million dollars by nine point seven and we have, we will work on a budget reduction of around six and a half million dollars.
How did you get from nine point seven to six point five? Are we coming up with additional cuts?
So sixteen point two-two was purely, uh, Kyle, can I please go back to the previous slide?
Oh, okay. Yep, I was looking at the wrong one.
This is where the sixteen point two-two is coming from. And if you go to the next slide, Kyle. Over here, the i- items on the upper half shows that these are the things which will help offset that sixteen point two million dollars, which is the S S A, E S A, the fund balance one percent, if the board is comfortable approving it, as well as the students served decrease. So nine point seven equates to that. So the previous slide, sixteen point two-two, the budget offset, nine point seven, so the total reduction that we can target is six and a half. The way we have historically presented to the board, Jackie, is we have presented sixteen point two-two as the the reduction that we are targeting and the upper half of the slide would be shown at a later time. This time, we have just decided to present it a little, little differently.
How, I always get spending authority wrong, so you'll correct me. Why just six point oh? Like, why couldn't we spend more of the thirty-six million?
Uh, Kyle, can you go to the next slide? So this is the graph which I had showed before two year, correct? Now, the board has to decide whether we want to spend one, six percent is a million dollars. We want to spend one percent or we want to spend two percent. I'm on a very conservative basis saying six percent, I'm sorry, six million dollars or one percent, so that we have a pathway in case it is needed for the next four to five years. That is the reason why I'm suggesting one percent. If the board wants to move to two percent and say, no, we want to do two percent, then there is no budget reduction because if you go back to the previous slide, if six million dollars happens to be one percent, if you do two percent, that that six and a half becomes point five million dollars. So there's no need to have any reductions. That is the discussion which the board needs to feel comfortable about. What is the amount that we are willing to reduce from the carryover spending authority?
Is there any way to ask for some projections? Uh, and I, I don't know how, I don't know if that's possible, but it'd be helpful to understand what the five-year trend is one percent versus two percent. And, because I see that it's, I see it's going down, but we might say, maybe it's not fifteen percent. Maybe it's thirteen percent, right? Based on what the, 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 the risk band is. And so I don't know if you can even do that, Shashank, give us some projection. But I, I know we all probably want to know the answer to the difference between one and two percent.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I think what I'm also hearing, Shashank, um, and I appreciate um, your charge, your willingness to sort of go more conservative. But I would like to also see, right, what does that projection look like and how it impacts um the health of our fund balance um, for spending in, in the next three to five years? Because it will, two percent will actually get us to this place where we will ha, we will not need to have any reductions. Is that correct?
That is correct. Because if it was just half a million dollars, which is, to your point, yes, we wouldn't need any budget reductions. That is fair.
Yeah.
Ho- however, I guess, at the same point, it's good to spend the money. I think cutting things sometimes, right? We, we should also be open to cutting things that are
Yes.
non, not necessary, which I know it's harder to find those because of all the cuts that D N P S has had, but.
Particularly as it aligns to our board goals and guardrails, right? Is how is it going to impact board goals and guardrails? I think we should anchor potential cuts in that as well, yeah.
And, and maybe the other thing is, and this is not coming from you until February, but there's a lot of discussions about our growth trajectory on certain elements of programming, whether it's pre K and, and that money could also, right? If you think about some of the big goals that we have, that money could also be directed towards, it's, it's general fund, so we can spend it however we want, non-capital, it's like non-capital funding, right?
So personally, Jackie, I'm very happy with this discussion because this is exactly what I was hoping to have. And yes, I have taken a conservative thing and I'm happy to share projections with the board with both one percent and two percent. Because we will have five-year plan done by February, to your point. We, we, we have always come to the board with five-year projections. We will do it. If you reduce one percent, what is the impact? If you do two percent, what is the impact? I can always do that.
Shashank, just a question on, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sure. No, no, go, go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to ask, on the slide that we're on right now, the student-served reduction, there are the two million. How much of that is uh exiting to charter schools? Is that, is that what that is or am I not looking at that the right way?
I don't think they know.
It is a combination of both, both the E S A as well as the student service. It's a combination of both.
Okay, okay.
But, but we should anticipate that that will increase because next year, everybody is.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
So, so my apprehension is two or threefold, Jackie. What is, as you rightly hit the nail on the head, that, that a cap which you have had of three times uh the, the the salary amount or the household income, that cap is going to go away. So there could be a tsunami. And it's very difficult to predict how the numbers will be impacted with that. My second fear is, I don't know what's going to happen under the new federal government. And that is why when you were asking me that question, I said, we are going into sensitive territory. All, all of us have read multiple articles of what they are planning to do as far as the E goes. Is it going to come to fruition or not? It's very speculative. So at this point in time, I'm not dying anything for that. But if anything that has been presented by the incumbents could have really big, really big effect.
I think this was great. And I'm looking around the table and I, I see some shaking heads to see one versus two percent. And then the five years, um, thinking.
The, the other question I guess I have is sort of just a, a, a theoretical one. Where are their fund balances in, that Des Moines School District has that we are not allowed to use elsewhere? And I guess a more pointed question is, how much money might be available in Des Moines Public Schools where it would not affect the health of that fund balance? In other words, the use of that fund balance would still be viable and we would have enough money to do what we would need to do in that fund balance. Is there anywhere in our buckets where we have more than enough money? And it would be useful to, if we could theoretically move it. And I know we can't, I'm asking a theoretical question.
Well, why are you, like?
I'm just asking.
No, 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 that's a fair assumption because our funding unfortunately is so siloed.
Yep.
That it makes it very difficult. So the, the two buckets where we have one sitting, two large buckets where we have one sitting, one is save, which is used for the capital projects. And the other is the, uh, the operating funds or the general funds. But as we know, the cap on the spend on general fund is not cash, but the spending authority. So those are the two places where we have large cash balances. There could be a million here, two million somewhere else. But these are the two places where we have the largest funds available.
But it's only a couple of million dollars even in theory. In that theoretical world, it's only a couple of million dollars. We're not talking about fifty million dollars sitting somewhere.
No, 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 no. I would say ninety, if not ninety-five percent of the funds are sitting in these two funds that I just mentioned.
Okay.
I feel it's important, just because I know some people watch the, the tantalizing conversations that we have. I do think that one of the things that we should all think about is, we've seen the effects of funding positions that can't comfortably be funded in perpetuity. And in much the same way we look at this, it's, um, that's not to say that we're going to have six or twelve million dollars every year to keep funding it. And so I just, while we get excited, we also need to think about the fact that if you don't see a sightline in this for several years, it's, it, we need to be really careful about position ads. So, sorry, I just wanted to put that in some context for us or have that type of conversation.
Jackie, that's a, Jackie, that's a very valid point that you're raising. Save the board, based on the five-year projections, decide that for the next fiscal year, let us just go with two percent versus one percent. That does not mean that for F Y twenty seven budget, we may decide, let's hold the horses. We're not going to go to two percent, we'll bring it to one percent or even zero percent. This is a one-time decision that the board will be making for F Y twenty six.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. So this is my last slide. Any other questions from, from the board?
I think the biggest one, you know, we all know we're going to have a big January and February, lots of things for, for us to talk about with the community and amongst ourselves as the board. Is there any way to give us the five-year uh projection? Like, there's so many um variables, but we talk a lot about the budget impacts, but I don't know that I've ever seen the five, like a five-year trajectory, almost like a rolling five or something at a high level. Is that even possible to ask for with a school district?
Uh, Jackie, you're talking about uh the, the projections for the next five years for general fund?
I am.
Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, because I think.
The only caveat I would, I would say is the, the further out that we go, the heavier the projections get. But we can absolutely do that.
We'll get, we'll get a, we'll get a starting point to look at at least.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Board members, other questions, uh, Ms. Marterano?
No questions at this time. Thank you, Shashank. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Is Jenna on, Ms. Knox, is she on yet? Okay. Okay, I, I think we're getting lots of pondering and thinking, which is a great place for us to end the conversation. So thank you very much. Do we say namaste, like namaste, namaste at the beginning, at the end? I don't know, but.
Namaste.
There you go. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shash.
You, you're welcome, you're welcome, boy. Thank you.
So, board members, do we need a break before we go into closed session or can we just go? Actually, let's take a three-minute break only because our phenomenal C I O has been helping us all and is, um, I want to make sure we give him just a few minutes to, to reconcile where we are. So let's just take three minutes and then for everybody.